Well, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Monday, March 21st, 2016 City Works Session. At this time, I will call the meeting to order. And we have a couple of folks that are going to be here tonight. I will let you know that the Chamber of Commerce will not be here. There's family issues in Arizona that she's taking care of, so we'll have her at a later date. So at this time, Craig, I see you're here. We will get her lit up, and the Watertown Development Company can kind of come in and give us an idea what's going on.
Well, good afternoon. Craig Atkins, I'm the President of the Watertown Development Company. And we just, first of all, I'd like to let you know that we're thrilled with the opportunity to come in front of you today and talk to you a little bit about some of the things that the Watertown Development Company's been up to. And I've got just a few slides that I'd like to go through to kind of put it in perspective. When this letter was sent to us, and then my subsequent conversations with the mayor, one of the things that he asked that we do is discuss our financial balance, our financial statement. And just to let you know, because of the way that we're structured and organized, we don't release publicly our financial statements, but I will, at a very high level, kind of touch on some of the financial things that we're involved with and give you kind of a lay of the land in terms of our economic health or our financial health, which right now is extremely strong, which is good news compared to where we were probably five or six years ago. I will also tell you, and this is an offer, standing offer for any of the council members, that I'd be more than happy, on a one-to-one basis, to sit down and go through those financial statements. The mayor receives those as a board member on a monthly basis, although he's technically not allowed to share those. And then, I believe, we file those with Shelley at the City Finance Office when we have loans active maybe once a year, as well as other lenders. So if you want to talk about an organization that has a lot of sets of a lot of financial experts' eyes on them, ours certainly fit that bill. We, in addition to that, have all the lenders in the state and others that see our financial statements on an annual basis. So just to give you a little overview of the Watertown Development Company, today we have a net worth of about $12.5 million. That includes real estate, buildings, land, and other assets. Our current equity position, so this would be any fixed assets, cash, buildings, and so on, right now is about $6.8 million. A majority of that is real estate. And that's real estate that we have equity in, so our actual value in that real estate, obviously, is much higher. Our annual operating budget is somewhere in the neighborhood of $5,000, or $500,000. That fluctuates fairly dramatically, because any given year, we may have a special project that we're working on, where we expend more monies or less monies. And I've got an example of that in a couple of minutes that, if I don't remember, is kind of talking about that, where one year we might do a revamp of some of our marketing materials, the following year we won't, so that expense wouldn't show up. And as most of you know, the Watertown Development Company is funded on a five-year capital campaign. We're currently in our Focus Four Capital Campaign, which runs from 2013 to 2018. So we're about halfway through that campaign. In that last effort, we had established a goal of $2 million, and we raised 2.1 million of that. And I see we have a little typo there, please forgive us, but the city provides us with $100,000 annually, which makes up 23% of the total. Thirty-three percent of our investment come from public funds, city, county, school district. And with every dollar that the city invests in the development company, we're able to leverage an additional $3.2. And the reason I think that's important for you to understand is oftentimes, depending on the campaign cycle, the city's commitment is the first commitment that we reach out to get. And so that obviously helps to set us up for the success in our campaign and/or would be challenging if that weren't there. One of the things that we do as part of the five-year capital campaign is develop a five-year strategic plan. And this is a really brief summary of what that plan entails. But in that plan, we also have some specific goals as it relates to job creation, workforce development, capital investment, infrastructure improvement, and many other things. And so these are increased business visitation and outreach, aggressively market Watertown nationally and at a regional level, cultivate an accessible, well-trained, and world-class workforce, communications, collaboration, and investor relations. So if there were a special project that we might get involved with, for an example, when we did some work for President Obama's visit, we partnered with the city, the Chamber and the CVB. But the development company and the city actually paid for the materials that were produced for that effort. Planning and development of economic development-related infrastructure, which we refer to as things that enhance our industrial parks or facilities and buildings that we currently own. Probably one of the best examples of this is our spec buildings. In the last three years, we've built two spec buildings, filled one of those very quickly, and finished the last one about a year ago, and have had several inquiries about that building. And then regional collaboration, which is basically our outreach to surrounding communities. This is a philosophical discussion, more than anything, but we do set some resources aside for this. And the idea is that it'd be very challenging for us to go to Clark, or to Florence, or to Henry, or one of these other communities, and tell them, hey, we've got money, we want you to do economic development. So how our board has kind of positioned that is, we have these resources available as communities approach us, because in the smaller communities, it really needs to be their idea or their initiative, and then we'll be more than willing to support that. And I can tell you, just recently, we had a meeting with one of our communities just to the east, or just to the west of us, and are working with them on trying to help out a business that had some major issues. We also assisted the community of Florence several years ago, as well as the community of Castlewood. Florence was when the Watertown, or when their elevator burnt down. Castlewood was with some infrastructure for a road project. So the question posed to us was, what do we use the city's finances for? What are they put towards? And the reality is, we don't specifically dedicate any monies that we received during our capital campaign to any specific project. That budget I just shared was a pretty good example of the broad categories where all the funds go. And what that does, then, is helps us to achieve our goals and objectives that we outline in our strategic plan. And for an example, in this five-year campaign, we have an $80 million capital investment goal. We have 1,000 jobs created or retained. We have the development of a workforce advisory council, and providing training assistance for workforce development. So we really do, and then marketing and other issues. So we really do that. But here's an example of what those monies are used for. So in the past three years, this is our cumulative prospect inventory, I suppose you could say. In 2013, we worked with 38 companies. We conducted 16 RFI's. So that's a formal written request that we provide to a company. Those prospects, some of them are generated internally, some of them are generated as recommendations by an outside source, and some of them come from site consultants, and a majority of them come from the state of South Dakota through GOED. And that just gives you an idea. Eighteen hostings. We define hostings as any time a company visits, and one hosting could really equate to multiple visits. So we don't, you know, say that XYZ company was here five times, and now we have five hostings. And then you can just, I'm not going to go through 2014 and 2015. You can see those numbers. We generally do in that 30 to 40 range, so those are pretty consistent. 2015 was a pretty busy year for us. And as a result, in the last three years, we've had 129 companies that we've been in communication with. We've conducted 68 RFI's, 53 hostings, and we've completed 25 projects. And when we say that we've completed a project, that means it's either resulted in action, like we've provided some land, we've put together a financial package, or we've helped assist that company with whatever their relocation or expansion needs are. And if you give me the opportunity in a minute, I will go through just some of those to kind of give you an idea of what I'm talking about. In terms of capital investment, since 2013, the Watertown Development Company's been involved in several projects. We've created over $32 million of total capital investments. That's our direct involvement. So for an example, we might talk about the Watertown Rec Center, but that's not a number that we would include here. These are projects where we've actually assisted the company in securing financing, or in some cases, we've provided financing, or we've put together a package where we own real estate for that company to lease and then buy back from us. And so for an example, in the last three years, we've generated over $32 million to date in direct economic capital investment. Job creation, just another example of where how are we doing and where are we at on our goals. Job creation to date, 225 jobs in 2013. That was a rather large number, because we had two projects that year that really made a big difference. 160 in 2014. And even though we had all those prospects in 2015, our job numbers were down slightly for a gamut of reasons. Some of those projects we're still working on, some of those will get carried on into 2016. But for that, just for that three-year total, or roughly halfway through our capital campaign, we're just shy of halfway to our goal of 1,000 new jobs. Some of the projects, and this isn't inclusive, but just to give you kind of a feel for some of the projects that that money is used to help support, the expansion of metrics into our first spec building in the Pheasant Ridge Industrial Park, Dakota Bodies' expansion of 45,000 square feet, and ultimate purchase of the facility that they're in, that the development company used to own. And that's a pretty classic example of how it would work. We built the building, we leased it to them, with the idea that someday, we would sell it to them, and then we would turn around and use that investment to reinvest in other projects, like the spec building. Dakota Tube, this is a classic example of the WDC and city's partnership. The city had some land in the airport, and we've worked with the mayor's office, and the mayor, and the company, to put that land in a position that ultimately it can be transferred to them. In the meantime, the development company owns that building, and we're leasing it back to Dakota Tube. Moffett, this was a pretty straightforward deal. We authored the ready loan application to help them secure their financing. And so they had a majority of the financing in place, but they came to us and said, you know, we're still a little short, what can you do to help us? And that's what we ended up putting together. JMS, Glacial Lakes Rubber, and then wanted to highlight just a couple of new businesses. We've had a couple of other new businesses, but this is probably one of our larger success stories to date. The new business originally was Specsis, excuse me, and they've already created up to 30 jobs. They feel that that business will grow. They moved into the former Minnesota Rubber Building. And in the meantime, and you don't even know about this, this is the first time it's been publicly announced, they've added a new company called RVI, which does electronics testing that is now leasing space in that building, and they have plans to expand that business's operations. And they did that just internally. I mean, they had the space. But it was with our work that we did with the state initially, along with the city and the development company, to come up with the financing for them to buy that building and ultimately create those jobs. And for those of you that were on the council at the time, when we came and presented to you the package, and this is just a rough example of it, one of the things we told you is, we're investing in the unknown. We knew that they would commit to 30 jobs. We knew that they would be doing this type, certain type of work. I think some of you will remember the large rail car we presented that day. But we didn't know what other spinoffs or benefits might be as a result of this company. And it's been a great success to this point with them adding the new business. And ironically, what I should tell you is Kevin Wald, who is the owner, has mentioned to me more than once that he thinks Watertown's workforce is fantastic, and that they've had minimal challenges in hiring workforce, which is different than what we've heard in the past, given the current workforce challenges that we're faced with. Marketing initiatives. Many of you remember that as part of the president's visit, we kind of kicked off this new initiative. We took some of our marketing materials and tried to develop a message that all of our partners, the development company, the Chamber, the CVB, and the city, could talk about during that three, two- to three-week period of time. From that, we developed the Watertown Works platform, and since that time, we've taken that on a step further, and have now redesigned our website and enhanced our social media capabilities to include the Watertown Works message, which is really Watertown Works for work, Watertown Works for workforce, Watertown Works for a great quality of life. And if you haven't had the opportunity to go out and check our website, I would encourage you to do so. I will tell you, just in the short period of time, that the Watertown Works Facebook page has been up. We're nearing 3,000 contacts. We've had over 150,000 impressions, which means over 150,000 individuals have accessed that website at one point or another since June of last year. So it's really had a tremendous outreach. And the demographics on that continue to just impress us. As a result of some of that work, Watertown was awarded in 2013 the IEDC Excellence Award Silver for our publication, for our marketing materials that we send out to companies and to businesses. And then just this last year, in 2015, we received an award from the Mid-American Economic Development Council as it relates to our annual report. And that was one of two that was recognized at that event, which is made up of economic development organizations in the upper Midwest, including 10 states. So it's always nice to hear that, because you know our peers are looking at our materials and telling us that, you know, you guys are doing marketing work and advertising that we're envious of, quite honestly, and so that's always exciting to hear. And then workforce development. Five years ago, workforce development wasn't really a big part of our strategy. I will tell you now, this takes up probably 20 to 30% of all of our resources. And one of the first things we did is created the Workforce Advisory Council. We were a key stakeholder in the governor's workforce development efforts a little over a year ago. And to this point, we've had 10 to 15 stakeholders that attend those meetings on a regular basis. It's open to any HR professional. And we have over 35 HR professionals that have participated at some level in our Workforce Advisory Council. One of the other programs, as it relates to our Workforce Advisory Council, is our Attract and Enhance Program, which is a very unique program that was funded by the Governor's Office of Economic Development with a $50,000 grant that we, as a community, had to match. We're using those grant funds to provide training and relocation reimbursements to employees directly. So how that works is, a company approaches us, they submit the application, we have to keep the name of the employee confidential, but the Attract and Enhance and the Workforce Advisory Council review that request, and then they can make an award up to $1,000. The caveat to that is that the company has to provide at least $1,000 in matching funds. And so for companies that already do this, and several of them do, where they provide an opportunity for an engineer, or a salesperson, or an accountant to relocate to our community, and they say, as part of that package, we're going to match, we're going to provide you with moving expenses, we will match that up to $1,000. Not a big deal, but it's really, really taken off, and we've really gotten a lot of interest in it. To date, we have done 14 of those applications, and we're getting our first company-wide application approved in the next months, where we'll actually be doing training for existing employees, but it's going to be company-wide. And so that's going to be a little larger award, that'll probably be about 5,000. But again, they're matching that, and in this case, I think it's a three-to-one match that they're offering. So a great opportunity for us to assist businesses in addressing their workforce development challenges. And those are just a couple of things. This group has also worked on the Watertown Manufacturing Week, and we have plans this year to expand that, and our efforts as it relates to that program. And then probably the kind of the catch-all area, a lot of the activities that we do are to build capacity. And some examples of that, and I know this is a little bit redundant from what I talked about earlier, but would be the spec buildings. Capeska Capital, which is an angel investor fund that we created as part of this campaign, where we have, I think now, 18 individual private investors that have each contributed at least $50,000. And the numbers don't quite add up, because some of those investment groups are made up of one or two people. But that fund was set aside to help entrepreneurs. We found that in our last strategic plan and our return on investment, that one of the areas that we really didn't have some good resources were our entrepreneurial development. And I need to give a shout-out to Don Robey, because he helped get that off the ground. Honestly, if it wasn't for his work in getting those folks together, I don't know if we'd have been successful. But that has been a very, very good success, and that company's actually now made an investment in a couple entrepreneurial-type projects. And while neither one of those is taking place in Watertown, the hope or the idea is that, at some point in the future, components of what they do, or parts of their business will be done in Watertown. And one of those investments does have a company in Watertown that's a vendor. So we've already seen some rewards on that. Some of you may be familiar with the Commerce Center. Premier Bank made that donation to the city, and then the city donated that building to the development company, with the caveat that the development company, Chamber of Commerce, and CVB, and other nonprofits, use that as their home. And I think that building has been a tremendous asset. We spent a little north of $140,000 on the renovation and remodel of that facility. And now we have a third floor that we would also like to renovate in the future, so you may hear us come back and talk to you about that at some point in the future, that we could use as kind of a hybrid incubator coworking space for very small entrepreneurial opportunities. That's been a little more challenging. We've been doing some work on some grants, and it's kind of, you almost need to have the bird in hand before you can make the ask, but you can't make the ask unless you have the bird in hand. So if you follow me on that. And then, one of our bigger issues that we've been working on more recently is future industrial park acquisition. As most of you recall, when the city agreed to transfer the land purchased by Glacial Lakes Energy, one of the caveats to that was that we'd set that money aside, along with other sales from land transactions, that the city and development company work on jointly for future industrial park acquisition. Concurrently, the development company has also set aside a chunk of money that we will use, and the idea is that we will collaboratively come back to you with a proposal to purchase not one, but maybe two separate industrial or business park properties that we can use in the future. And this all stems from an analysis we did several years ago, which said, at our current absorption rate, we will run out of industrial park and business park property within the next five, or 10 to 15 years. But if it wasn't for the foresight of city councils and development company board members way back in the 90s and 80s, a lot of the land we have today that is almost full wouldn't have been available. So we may not see immediate return on this, but we would like to start that. And we have had some conversations just recently with a landowner, a representative of landowner, and within the next week or two, we're hoping that we will have some kind of consensus on purchase price, and then come to the council to discuss how we might split up that cost and how we might develop that property. And I think that's all I have. I wanted to leave a little bit of time. I don't know if I left a lot. I suppose since we're one short, we've got a little extra time.
Yeah. Craig, I'll give them like five minutes, and then we'll have to move on.
Yep, that's fine.
If they've got any easy questions for you.
Craig, the most recent success you guys have experienced has been Faber.
Yes.
Just came in. Now that they're here, what did they tell you? What were the reasons why they said we're going to do Watertown?
Well, kind of a long story, but they really liked this area. They wanted to get into South Dakota. The owners of the company, a couple of them live in Iowa, one of them lives in Sioux Falls. They felt Sioux Falls was too costly for their type of business, and this made sense, because not only are they in the implement dealership business, but they also do some assembly of product lines that they would sell either in Watertown or at their other facility in Iowa. And so ultimately, it came down to having available land at a price that they felt was competitive. And we didn't provide any, you know, special deal for them as it relates to the land value, but it made sense to them, and that location provides them with the access that they want. So it's an example where a lot of times, there's, you know, a lot of things that we put out on the table. This was more of a facilitation role that we also fill from time to time. So I hope that answers your question.
Craig, I don't have a question, I've got a comment. Our office, and I'm going to get accused of putting a plug in for our accounting firm, but our office goes way back with the development company, back to its origins practically. And I just want to clarify, it's probably understood, the development company is a nonprofit organization as far as how it's organized, under the auspice of the Internal Revenue Service, but they're still occasionally, but that was not always the case. It was originally formed as a for-profit organization, investor-owned, and about 20 years ago, thereabouts, the conversion was made to a nonprofit. But occasionally, I know through our office, we'll still get people that will call, they'll be going through mom and dad's papers after they've passed away, and they'll come across these old stock certificates, and they wonder, you know, what's the story with the development company? But I do want to clarify that it is a nonprofit organization, that there is no investors that are reaping any benefits by the actions of what's going on with the development company.
Right, right. And, you know, one of the things that our office is very sensitive of is confidentiality. In fact, we've just incorporated a confidentiality policy, code of conduct policy, that all of our board members are asked to sign. And there's a couple of reasons why we do that. And one is that it's not to our advantage to necessarily let our competition know what our strengths and weaknesses are financially, but probably more importantly, is that we, as part of the interaction we have with clients, provide them with a level of confidentiality until such a point that they want us to talk publicly about that business. So, and in fact, there are state statutes in place that allow economic development organizations to maintain their information in a confidential manner. But as I've said, it's not that we're trying to not share with you what that looks like, and I'm happy to do that. It's just not something that we want to necessarily discuss in a public setting.
You know, Craig, I want to make a couple of quick comments before we're done. You had mentioned other cities, you know, Florence, Castlewood, Henry. I think we also need to understand that some of these businesses that you're talking to have expanded into these other towns, which is good for Watertown, because most of those folks, you know, are still coming here and shopping. But one of the other comments I wanted to make was your addition of Michelle. I think that, you know, she was here in front of us and spoke on another occasion, I forget what it was, just a week or so ago, and I think she's a great addition for your organization over there.
Yeah, well, I appreciate that. We're, just like anybody, we have the same challenges when it comes to hiring staff, and we were really fortunate, both with her and Tracy, to get a couple of people that, and we've honestly now got the people in the right roles, and that's made a huge difference in our ability to respond to folks.
Well, thanks, Craig. We sure appreciate you swinging by.
Thank you.
We'll talk to you later and keep it up.
Sounds good.
Oh, and by the way, I think Faber took almost like two years to get done. You know, it isn't like they call today and they're ready to start building tomorrow.
Yeah, if there was one thing I probably failed to mention today, and I think most of you understand that, is, you know, economic development is a long-term process. I understand the pressure politically to make the next deal happen. And the story I always use is, although this isn't necessarily in our wheelhouse in terms of projects that we work on on a regular basis, is when Applebee's announced, I received an email from a young lady at the Technical Institute that said, "Great job on Applebee's, now when are you going to get an Outback?" And so that's the kind of mentality that we have to deal with quite often. There's nothing wrong with it, but it is truly a long-term process. Some of these deals, as Mike Danforth has mentioned before, when the company's ready to pounce, we need to be ready for them. That's why we have the spec building. Other projects takes months, years, or, as the mayor said in this case, two-plus years to finally bring together.
Craig, can I ask a quick question? Have we had any looks at the spec building?
Absolutely.
Can you share that with us?
Well, we've, I can't give you an exact number, because I don't have it with me today, but we've probably had at least, in the last three months, probably four months, at least a half a dozen inquiries, and we've had three companies since the first of the year that have been out to look at it. So, and we're actually in discussions with one of those right now, that has come back and said, "Let's put a package together, tell us how much it's going to cost to finish it, we'd like to either lease or buy that building from you." So it's doing what we told you it would do, but in our world, a prospect a month on a facility like that is kind of batting pretty good. You know, I would love to say that we have people every week, but that's just not realistic.
Okay, thanks, Craig.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, next on the line is Julie, oh no, Todd. Todd, you're okay. It's all right. Come on, go ahead, Todd. You're up.
He had me scared there for a minute. I've handed out a couple of handouts for you, and so you can look at them at your leisure. But to begin with, my name is Todd Case, and I'm the Executive Director of the First Planning District in Watertown, South Dakota. And again, as Craig said before, I'm glad for this opportunity to come and talk to you a little bit about the First District, some of the work that we've been doing here in Watertown and in our area. Just a quick synopsis of who the First District is. We are one of six regional planning and development districts located in the state of South Dakota. We have sister organizations in Aberdeen, Pierre, Rapid, Sioux Falls, and Yankton. We work in 11 counties and 75 communities in northeastern South Dakota. We were created in 1971 through executive
in 1971 through executive action. So we're a creature of government. We aren't government, but we are, we're created by Governor Frank Farrar back in 1971, and we'll be having our 45th anniversary. We are a membership-based organization. All of those 11 counties and 75 communities belong to the First District. They pay dues into our organization, which I'll talk about that in just a little bit in a minute, that helps perpetuate what we do as an organization. We're governed by a 35-member board, which has 11, three representatives from each of our counties. Currently, Cottonton County is represented by Brenda Hanton of the county. Craig Atkins is past chairman of our board and is our large member. And currently, we have a vacant spot on our board, which we'll be looking at filling here this summer. We also have the chairman of the Flanders, Antine, and Sissons and Wapentin tribes as far as membership. Regarding how we're financed, it's been pretty steady for most of the years that I've been associated with the district. But currently, 23% of our income comes in the form of dues. And I talked to that, all communities with at least a population of 100, and all 11 counties pay dues into our organization. We use those dues to leverage other state and federal grant funds. We also do specific state and federal contract work. So about 51% of our actual operating income comes in the terms of fee-for-service. So our fee-for-service work that we provide for technical services to our members is at rates that would be less than you would find in the private sector just due to the power of the collective of how we are financed. As far as the staff, we have 12 full-time and one-part-time persons working in our organization, collectively about 190 years' worth of experience. I've been with the district to be 23 years in May. Very seasoned staff that are there to provide assistance to our membership and whatever they need us to do. As far as what we do, most of you are aware that we specialize in putting together applications, grant applications, loan applications. If those projects get funded for a water tower or a street or what have you, then there's a lot of red tape that gets associated with, there's no free money. And we help get those I's dotted and T's crossed. Planning and research, that's what I spent most of my professional career with the district doing, is working in areas of zoning and nuisance and economic and community development, doing research and analysis on a wide variety of issues. We do some very specific technical specialties. Geographic information systems is very important to our organization. We have three and a half individuals that work solely in GIS. And we have a relationship with the city for the last 12, 13 years regarding geographic information system technologies. Also, within the umbrella of the First District, we have the development company. And the development company is a certified development company through the Small Business Administration. We have four employees in that area. And that organization partners with local lending providers. And we have our own funds in-house that we use to leverage projects for private business, new creation, new jobs, and expansion of existing jobs. Always comes back to, well, what are we getting for our dollars' worth of dues? And the easiest way to look at it is just the hard cash that comes in from outside sources, from state and federal dollars. Last year, about a little under a quarter million dollars was paid into dues into our organization. We were able to assist our members leverage about $21.8 million in grants and loans. Of that 21.8, 10.2 came in the area of just grants, outside dollars that came in from the federal and the state. You know, it's not us, it's really our membership that is investing in themselves. We don't have the dollars in the closet, but we know where the closets are. And we just try to make those connections between our members and those funding entities. So if you can see, the return on investment in 2015 district-wide was about $42 for every dollar's worth of dues. Since 2008, since I've been the director, we've been averaging a little over $28 in return on investment. When we take a look at Cottonton County, just this last year, dues was about $46,000 with all the entities included. Grants and loans, about $7.3 million, of which $3.5 million was in the form of grants, $77 return on investment, $26 over the course of the last seven, eight years. Watertown specifically, last year, $8,000, about $9,000 in dues is what the city pays our organization. We had one project that generated $18,000 in grants for the cities. If you take a look just since 2008, about $2.1 million in grant dollars. So $2 was our return on investment last year, but we've been averaging about $33 a year over the last seven or eight years. The other thing I would just briefly talked about, our development company, we did actually do two loans in the city of Watertown last year, about $490,000 on total project cost, about one and a half million. So that's just a very cursory review of things that we do. I just wanted to briefly talk a little bit about some specific projects. On the other handout, you can see, I'm not going to go through the Cottonton County, the smaller towns, but specifically just what are some things that we've done in Watertown over the course of the last year. You all know Luke Muller. He's here quite often. And actually, he's here a little bit more for the next several weeks, early, maybe a month or so, working as the urban planner for the city. He's going to be working on a part-time basis to fill that gap until Shane finds a replacement for Jeff. But otherwise, Luke's always here on Tuesday mornings, talking with staff and working as a conduit. Luke also is the zoning officer for Cottonton County through our office. So it's really good to have that communication. So we intend those planning department staff meetings. We act as that conduit between the city and the county. We maintain a lot of GIS data, the database. We assign addresses here in Watertown. We host a website for individual staff and the public to access GIS database. We did the grant last year for warning sirens, which was $18,300. We did apply for a solid waste grant application, but that one wasn't funded last year. Last year, I think really a big thing that was probably a year and a half in the making was the development of the joint jurisdiction zoning ordinance between the city and the county. That was completed about this time, oh, it was last summer, but we had started it over a year ago. And currently, for about the last year and a half, we've been working on updating the comprehensive land use plan for the city. And I think once Luke finishes his work as the urban planner here over the next few weeks, we'll have that project wrapped up before the Fourth of July is our anticipation. So again, we just appreciate the working relationship that we've had with the city and the staff and your leadership. And we look forward to, you know, another successful year. And I'd be more than glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Thanks, Todd. If anybody has any questions for Todd, you're sure welcome to address it. I just want to upfront say how easy it is to work with First District. And like you say, with Luke here every week on Tuesdays and letting us know what's going on in the county, what's kind of close to Watertown and what's going on. It's very beneficial for us.
And I just should also just make the, say, since Craig's here too, and he sits on my board, we've always had a great working relationship with the Development Corporation and doing pet projects for them. And one thing that Craig didn't talk about recently is an outreach project with the Development Corporation that had nothing to do with money, but Craig's time working with the town of Bryant and creating a tax increment financing district for a project for them to expand. So a shout out for that organization as well.
Todd, what do you see for the grant environment going forward?
Well, you know, it's kind of funny. When I started in 1993, and at that time, I was principally a grant writer for the first couple of years of my career. We felt that if we didn't get 65 to 70% of a project funded with federal or state grant dollars, we weren't doing our job. I think today, if we hit 50%, we hit a homer. Right now, we generally aim 35 to 45% in grant sources if the project's right. The good thing is there's pretty adequate dollars for water and sewer projects. Street projects are always a hard thing to finance. Public buildings, again, are very difficult to finance anymore. You know, fire departments, emergency service centers, there are dollars out there for that. But it's getting more and more difficult to find dollars to track down specific projects. So we have to start thinking about doing it our own. I think the city does a very good job with their capital improvement planning process. It's something that we try to instill and encourage our other smaller communities to do because you have to have those sinking funds set up for rainy days. Well, thank you.
Anybody else?
Thanks, Todd.
Thanks, Todd. We really appreciate it. And did you, did you get anybody hired for that position yet?
Well, actually, today, the application had like closed. We're going to be hiring a new office manager in our office. So that 190 years' worth of experience just went to 150 because Jan's been with us for 42 years, so.
Say, Todd, maybe you mentioned, where is your office?
Oh, yes, very good. Well, you know, that's one of the things. We kind of fly below the radar in most situations, and we kind of like it that way. But we're located right across the street from the fire department in the old Barclay Building. We've been there since the middle 80s.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. So Julie, nothing like being on the job for a month or two and then have to come up here. No pressure.
Three months and 21 days.
21 days?
Yep.
We're excited to have you here.
Well, thanks. I don't know what about easy y'all this is.
Well, great. Well, if you will just introduce yourself and we'll let you do your thing.
My name is Julie Knudsen. I am the new executive director of the Watertown Convention and Visitors Bureau. And I have to say, it's really a lot of fun to be here in front of all of you and not be talking about potholes. Yeah, you took a long time.
Thanks, Todd.
So we don't want you to start over. I'm kidding. I know, I'm just teasing you. All right. Mine's not as fancy as theirs. Where am I? Computer. There we go. We lost the color, but that's okay. Okay, I guess 2015, I came on January 1st of 2016, but I was on the board of the CBB for about two and a half years. So a little bit of this, I was in on retrieving some of the numbers was a little challenging, but I'll just bear with me here. 2015, where did that go? Why won't that do that, Craig? Beginning right here. There we go. Okay. There we go. Okay, 2015, the income for the Watertown Convention and Visitors Bureau, the city of Watertown contributed $251,500. And the Watertown Business Improvement District contributed $16,500. So our total budget going into 2015 was $268,000. Our actual budget, what we ended up was $232,27. And obviously, the major drivers and the difference there were the payroll benefits and taxes and some of the advertising commitments that had been anticipated. The executive director, of course, retired in August of 2015. So that's where the difference came there. Last year, the BBB tax, a 6.27% increase with an income of $708,217. So we did have a really strong year. I think our increase was higher than the state of South Dakota's increase. So that was just slightly. Of that $807,000, we did host 119,734 hotel overnights. Just off the top of my head, average cost of that. So we roll into a pretty large number of revenue that came in. The BBB tax got 1% of that, which was $101,000 of the 807. The other tax came from the gas and food and all of the others. So just the hotel stays. I didn't have, you know, as far as the people count, that's hard, but we know how many people stayed overnight, so. One of the biggest expenditures, I know two years ago, when I was on the CBB board, I came to the council when we were going to spend the $45,000 on the new website. And a lot of what we're doing now is including accountability for our spending. And with all of the social media and all of those types of things, it's really easy to see where those numbers are increasing. 2015 was the first total, you know, complete year that that website was up and running. I think we got it going in March of last year. And so it wasn't a whole year, but we do spend $20,000 a year to keep up the website and also adding some bells and whistles along the way that we maybe need to add to make it more efficient. So we've got Google Analytics that tells us a little bit about that. We had 59.43% new users, 515,000 views. So I think for being up less than a year, I think that's pretty impressive. 2015, our website had 297, over 297 sessions. The Bramble Park Zoo was in the top three page view of each month of the year. And when you look at some of those statistics, the visitors to the Bramble Park Zoo was a record 70,000 visitors last year. The family was our major focus last year for our peak season marketing campaign. And so we did see that there was some success with reaching those families. And the hits to the zoo page and the zoo site, the pictures and the page views were very high for that. Our prime markets last year were Winnipeg, St. Cloud, Fargo, Brainerd, Alexandria, Wilmer, and Grand Forks. And when you take a look at these two pages, and then we have secondary markets, of course, of all the states, South Dakota, Minnesota, Iowa, Wisconsin, North Dakota, and Nebraska. All of the 25 followed our 2015 marketing plan that we co-opted with the state of South Dakota, which we've done every year for many, many years. We did pull some visitors in from Louisville and Kansas City and Chicago. And Kansas City and Chicago have proven as we're doing some of our peak season plotting for 2016, that those are pretty strong markets for us. So we're going to change things up a little bit though this year. As far as, you know, I don't have really what the mindset was in going into all the marketing. I know that a lot of it had been a lot of the same types of things for a long time. What we have going, this is a real small list of some of the new things that we have going on. Partnering with all of the entities in Watertown, you know, Art Walk, the Chamber of Commerce, different events and sponsorships that they already have going on. Our peak season marketing campaign is going to target the bucket lister for the first time. We're really excited about that because they spend money 12 months out of the year instead of the families that spend it three months out of the year. So we've got some pretty exciting things going on there. Partnerships and servicing, creating and growing new events with the Watertown Event Center. I think that there's just a lot of relationship building going on and teamwork going on right now. So we're really excited about that. And I think 2016 is going to be an exceptional year for the CBB. So I don't know, if you have any questions, you know, we appreciate your support and encouragement. And if you haven't been to the state tourism convention, I would highly recommend that as a council member, you take that in just so you can kind of get the dollars and sense of what the visitor is all about. Because from a sustainability standpoint, the visitor is very important to our community.
And that is exciting to go there. I mean, to all the people that are pumped up to get folks here to Watertown and kind of what different cities are doing. You can talk to them and you can see what the state is doing. And Julie, we're really excited to see kind of that new feeling of excitement kind of go on there. So I'm going to open it up for questions for you if anybody has any.
Try not to stump me too much.
No, they'll be nice.
Julie, welcome aboard, for one thing. At the very first.
Thank you.
Just like Steve said, we're excited to see some new blood in there and not to badmouth Karen. I mean, that's just, every now and then, you just need reinvigorate everything.
You know, everybody does things differently. And bless her heart, she was here for 16 years.
Yep.
And she's the reason why I was interested in the CBB to begin with is she brought me onto the board, so.
One thing that's always been kind of a thorn in my side for many, many years, and maybe it's unfair to ask you this question, being you're so new in the job, but.
Oh, I'll try.
Okay. Do you have any future plans or changes to try to promote? To me, which is one of our biggest assets is.
How much time do we have?
Lake Compeska.
Lake Compeska? Actually, for our 2016 marketing campaign, and I mean, there's just so much going on, to even put it in there was going to be probably too much. But we're going to have all new video and all new. new video and all new photography done this year for Watertown. It's well overdue, so we did put that into our co-op budget for this year. Lake Compeska, the golf courses, all of the things that have kinda been left out before, we're gonna make a big, long list and we're gonna work really hard to have that be as complete as possible.
Yep. To me, that's the biggest thing that makes Watertown a destination, and I think over the last 20 years, we've kinda forgotten about that, so that's great to hear. Thank you.
Yes.
Julie, we have the tenant, or the new softball fields coming, what's the, what's the plan to get them going? Because we've heard all along they're state-of-the-art fields, so that certainly has to be a big draw for Watertown.
Well, and it will be. I guess with that and with the new multipurpose center, I plan to meet with all of the folks that are pertinent to both of those things, so that I can get, you know, all of the information that I need to market that. We'll get it on our website and there's different things that we can be doing. There's symposiums, sports symposiums, I talked to some of the folks at the rec center and even Steve Moore about maybe we send some people from Watertown to some of these symposiums. And I'm kind of approaching those kinda things a little bit differently, where we're kinda signing on some of the attractions and some of the people that are, their business is sports and, you know, let them come along, because, you know, they can talk the talk and I can go there as the CVB, but they're the experts and so we're gonna take some folks along to some of our shows that can really be dynamic and talk and speak well about Watertown and that way we have a little bit more of a flexibility and we can get more places and do more shows and maybe bring the bid board into funding a few of those things, so.
You're gonna be heading to Minneapolis here shortly.
Yes.
You just came back from one not too long ago, didn't you?
I was in Sioux Falls week before last, that was the same weekend as the basketball tournament, so I was double booked that weekend and then I was in Kansas City in February. So, it's been busy and we're gonna try and take in some, some shows that we've never done before. I know that there's some of the markets that do, you know, go after just different types of shows rather than the hunting and fishing, which is primarily what we've been doing. So, we're gonna offer some opportunities to some of the attraction folks and the hoteliers and, you know, if any of you guys wanna sign up, you guys can go represent us at a show here or there.
You know, maybe it's a little bit premature to think this way, but maybe not, you know, I mean, you go into a lot of the bigger cities and they can afford to do that, but, you know, they have a athletic commissioner, not maybe, I guess commission isn't the word I'm looking for, but, you know, I think it's time we probably look at some of that with some of the new projects that we got coming along with the ice and the softball and the new multipurpose facility, and I'm not talking, spending a lot of money on it, but I think it's time we put together a committee and start looking at some of that, so.
Right.
And those people that Julie were talking about are definitely the ones that need to head that up, so.
Well, and if you, you know, I guess when you, you talk about money and the mayor knows that I'm not afraid to come to you folks if I've got, I mean, I'll do my diligence, but if I really believe that we need something at the CVB, I'm gonna come and ask you to help us with that. But when you look at the return on investment for the visitor, if we do it right, we can afford to spend some money on it and it's well worth it, so that's some of the best revenue we'll get.
Anybody else got any questions for Julie? Well, thanks Julie.
You're welcome.
Yeah, turned out great. We do appreciate you stopping down here and giving us a little update of what's going on and...
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you guys.
Okay, now it's the Shane show.
Thank you. It's a little easier to look at all of you together when I'm sitting over here, so. Two-way, two-way street, isn't it? Let's see. Somehow...
This is on the council meeting tonight, isn't it? We're gonna probably just do a little talking about it so that it won't take so much this evening. This one and the pavement management study also, am I correct?
Yes. Somehow the...
I'm just trying to help you kill some time.
PVF I had opened is no longer open. Well, here's, here's one of them, I'll talk about this one first. The drawing in front of you is our mill and overlay and proposal for 2016. You can see it has segments all over town. We have some in the north-central area, we have some out in the far west. This is an important corridor street over here by some of Terex's facilities. We have some core areas in the downtown, or I call it the greater downtown area, but in the residential area adjacent to downtown. Be, or Brun Avenue up here is a piece that needs some attention. We have a section out here by Terry Redland that's really, needs some attention as well, so we've got our overlays scattered out throughout the community. We do have some smaller segments, alleys, that were in need. But what I wanna particularly bring your attention to that's unique and new this year is this light blue piece is a portion of First Avenue, starting at Third Street West and ending at Highway 81. That is our proposed micro-surfacing project for this year. And with that, I'll kinda show you a little bit by, via some pictures of what micro-surfacing is. And it's a, really, kinda fits between two categories. You know, you're used to our normal chip seal projects where we spray oil on the ground and then spread rock over it and then knead that together with rollers. This is a little bit of a hybrid between that chip seal project and our traditional mill and overlay project. So, basically what they do is they use emulsified asphalt, which is similar oil to the chip seal, except that it's got some additives in it, and then it's actually mixed together with the aggregate in a pug mill on the machine, and then it's distributed as a very thin layer. And here you can see this is behind the paving machine, another shot behind a paving machine that lays that down really, really, really thin. That, this picture here shows you about how thin that mat of asphalt material is. And the unique properties of a micro-seal is that the oil and stuff that's made, this is made of, actually penetrates the surface of the material that it's being sprayed on. And here's a better example. This is nice and sealed over here where the micro-seal has been applied and this is the old porous surface right adjacent to it. And you can see here that all of the asphalt that was originally on this surface has been bled off or scraped off by wear and you can actually see the individual rocks. And this is, the purpose of the micro-seal is to rejuvenate the surface. Yes, Dan?
What happens when you plow one versus the other?
Well, the traditional chip seal, the rocks are a little bit more exposed on the surface and they can be a little bit tougher on the cutting edges of the snowplows. So, this should be a little bit more friendly on the snowplow. And primarily, we're gonna use these type of surfaces initially on our primary miner-collector routes, such as First Avenue, you know, Camp, and all of our quarter-mile roads is where we wanna try them first. And then, if we see a lot of success there, then we'll start to experiment with those in the residential areas, but for now, we wanna kinda, because it's a little bit more expensive operation, we'll go into it slowly, but, and on higher-use roads for now. One of the unique things about micro-surfacing is you actually have to take all of, any pavement striping that you have out on the road surface, you strip that off by sandblasting or milling it slightly to, otherwise that bleeds through. This is such a thin application that that, those lines will actually somewhat reflect through the surface, or if it's new enough paint, it actually is adverse to the adherence and penetration of this material into the surface below it. So, so that's one thing that you'll see when we get ready for this, this operation, is that they'll be out there grinding those stripes off or getting rid of the pavement stripes. And then we've gotta, of course, reapply the striping over the top of the surface when we're done and that's just a matter of procedure, so.
Shane, we're not able to do any of that work with our staff?
This is very, very highly technical construction. In fact, the closest contractor to our region is in St. Cloud, Minnesota. And just to give you an idea how far-reaching and for competition these projects are, the current contractor that's hired to do the work of this nature in Sioux Falls for the summer is from Arizona or Utah, I can't remember which, but one of the other bidders is from Kansas City, Missouri area, so this is highly unique and it's very few contractors involved in this type of construction at this point. And the city of Sioux Falls has had great success with it and so we thought we would give it a try and see how it works for our operations. You know, ideally, this is gonna give us seven or 10 years of more life on a street surface, so, I mean, let's hope that we get those kinda results. But, you can see, I mean, these are, these look like brand-new roads, basically, when they're done.
You still need to do the crack sealing prior, do you not?
Yes, yep. And that's because that, this is micro-surface, it's supposed to, it's kinda like painting your walls. It, that oil impregnates those little ones, but it doesn't have the structure to bridge the inch gaps, you know, like for crack sealing, so. But, and you can see a couple of these pictures when I talk about, see how they deliberately went next to the stripe? They didn't actually go over striping, you can see that on, see how they stopped on either side of, of some arrows that they wanted to pave? So, there's different techniques that people try to do. We're not gonna get that fancy here, we're gonna just try to, like this one here is paving alongside the stripe rather than over the stripe, but we're just gonna pave over ours and, or, you know, remove the stripes and repaint them. We're not gonna get too, too crazy on trying to preserve a little piece, but, so this is unique, we'll try it, we'll learn from it, we'll adapt and kinda go forward.
Well Shane, if there's, if this is successful for us, that, don't we, with the real lack of, of vendors, for lack of a better term, or contractors that can do this, do we kinda paint ourselves in a corner about potentially not having one? If we go to a more expanded use of this?
Potentially, but one advantage we have, or at least we feel that we have and wanna try to take advantage of, is the fact that the cities of Sioux Falls, Brandon, and several of the other surrounding communities now there, down around the Sioux Falls area, are doing these on an annual basis. And I would suspect at some point, the Brookingses and Mitchells and others will probably follow suit. And if we get to where we have a regional project, these guys are gonna come in and they're gonna beat each other up pretty bad on giving us good prices, and then they're gonna come into a region and do the whole thing. So they're gonna do Sioux Falls, they're gonna do Watertown, all in one, one period of time and not have to do that. Now, the way we're setting these up is, we will bid these as individual projects. If we don't get favorable bids one year, we'll just won't make an award and we'll wait and do a different project.
So when you look at the cost of doing this, I'm sure the cost is higher, but do you figure out, I mean, when you put down the chips and you take them off and you do all this stuff, how does that cost actually work out, you know?
We're probably getting chip seals for, is Rob here?
About a buck twenty.
Yeah. It's about a dollar a square yard difference. We're getting chip seals traditionally for, in that dollar twenty-five range, and this is at least estimated at this time as two twenty-five.
Does that, does that count our labor of coming in and sweeping it up and getting rid of it and all that? Cause that, that's an expense there also that you're...
It does not. So they're closer together than that, if you, if you took in consideration.
Yeah, that's probably two of the, two of the roughest things on your equipment is the blades, like Shane said, and then, of course, on your sweepers when they're picking up that chip seal, that's very, very tough on them, so.
And I would, I would guess that the more it's being used in this area, the more that you'll have other people getting into the business, would you not?
Correct. Yeah, I've, of course, prodded our local asphalt company to see if they were ever, would ever be interested in, and of course, they aren't at this point, but if it became a ongoing revenue stream for them, I would think they would certainly look at it. Any other questions on micro-surfacing? Let's see if I can get my other one to open up.
Hey Shane, have we talked about bike trails at all? Would this be something we'd consider for that as well? I don't, maybe they don't make equipment that would do that.
Potentially, I mean, we talk about what resurfacing are, should be done with bike trails and right now, the recommended is a fog seal, which is a lower technological thing than this. I mean, these are meant for heavier traffic, but a fog seal is similar to this and that's what we'll entertain with our bike trails as we go forward for maintenance. So, that probably wouldn't really apply to a bike trail directly, but certainly the technology's in that same genre, so. One of the other things that you're gonna see later in the regular council meeting is, you know, we've been in negotiations or discussions with our contractor for our pavement management system and one of the elements of that, that we always thought we would need to address is doing cores. And we were under the understanding when we entered the agreement through the state contract, that the city would have to buy a coring machine and hire somebody to go around and take cores throughout segments of our pavement system for evaluation as part of that pavement management data gathering. And subsequently, we've had discussions with our company that we hired to ultimately do the study and discuss that they would be able to do a subsurface stress investigation using a dynaflect, it's called, but basically, they go along and they thump the road with something and then they measure how the sound reflects back to the unit. And what they can do is tell you how strong the pavement is and what the underlying subgrade will also withstand. And I don't know all the technological pieces of that, but that can all be done in lieu of taking all these individual cores, which we would've had to supply information to the company and then they would've had to incorporate it into their program and all that. Well, if we have them do it directly through this other alternate method, that would alleviate us from having to buy a piece of equipment and hire a person to operate it, of course. Ultimately, they quoted us $29,822 to do this work, deflection testing work.
You know, this is something that we've been looking at, and I'm gonna just break in, welcome Beth, welcome back. Good to see ya. This is something that we've been looking at for a couple, two, three years almost now, to, to have a pavement management system. I know that Sarah was very involved in this early on and I'm glad to see us moving forward with this, you know, our roads are so expensive to fix and replace.
Yeah, so, I think this is a, I'm gonna ask permission to... Yeah, so, I think this is a, I'm gonna ask permission to amend our agreement with this company to include this twenty-nine thousand eight hundred dollars um, tonight. And uh, we think it's a cost value that will get eas- easily offset from what our original plan was. And uh, you see the, you'll see in the memo that we prepared for tonight's meeting, the specific dollars and and the advantage that we see that this will do for us rather than do the traditional pavement cores. But um, if there's any questions on this item, I, I certainly would answer them, otherwise uh, you know, I just wanted you to have some more background of why you're seeing an amendment. And we do have some grant dollars uh, from the state room in our contract there to include um, a portion of this at the eighty-twenty split. And that's also shown on that um, memo uh, on this council item, so it's good news, I think we should take advantage of that.
Shane, are you gonna use the Dynaflect on every road and all city streets or just segments of?
I, this one says for thirty thousand dollars, I can get it on all streets. I think I would start with all streets this year and then in subsequent years when we do some other testing, maybe we wouldn't do all of the streets. But we, we need a good baseline for our pavement management system and I'd be remiss to omit something that might be important.
Well, if you do all streets this year, it's gonna kinda give you a basic plan of where you're gonna have to, well, you know, this one's good this year, but we should check it again in another two or three, four or five years, whichever you have.
Yeah, I think we're gonna look at updating this pavement's uh, management system about every five years, so, I think it's important.
What's interesting is that if you look in the past, uh, not that it was wrong, but it was just kind of a drive-by and you would, they would just look at the roads and say, yeah, this one needs fixing and, yeah, this one needs it. Where this is gonna give you some, some real data.
Right.
That Mike is gonna like and he'll probably want a whole report on that thing on each, every road.
You know, uh, unfortunately, the way, and not just the community of Watertown, but throughout the region, we tend to be pothole chasers. Um, we fix roads after the potholes develop. Hopefully through ma- pavement management systems, we identify those before they become potholes and can fix them sooner and make things last longer, so.
Shane, have we, have we talked to any people, any, any communities that have done this? I, I'm not sure how new this technology is, but you know, have we done that kinda homework to know that this is a, a competent and and viable option for us in lieu of the core samples?
I'm, yes, I would say that without a doubt. Um, the state of South Dakota uses this ki- type of pavement management assessment. I'm sure that Minnehaha County and the city of Sioux Falls did that as well because their road systems are so enormous that what you could do this for in a week or two's time would take you a month or more for us to go out and core, so.
I just would add, the state has done that, they've got their own van that's, that the, South Dakota DOT is a leader on this. They've developed a lot of the technology they do and they've driven every str- uh, str- state highway in the system. And they grade the highways and they have substantial cost savings on knowing where to invest and when. And quite frankly, when not to invest, if there's a highway that's in such bad shape, then right, the pothole chasing, you might tend to fix it. There's times you just let it go and then get it off for total replacement, so uh, money well spent.
Yeah, thank you, you're right, I mean, that's exactly it.
Just out of curiosity Shane, do you back this up ever, do they audit any of these results with uh, with an actual core sample? Just to see how it stacks up compared to, to that, especially if you had a road, like I read through this information that you, that you, they, it would tell you that you probably need to replace the, the whole surface. Or a major reconstruction.
We may do some of that if we feel something doesn't add up. In other words, if we look at their data and their data says this thing's a cobblestone road, but yet when you walk it, if it looks better, we may have to do some coring on occasion. Um, I'm fearing that it'll be just the opposite. Some roads that we thought were pretty good shape, we'll probably find that aren't up to par and will need more aggressive treatments. Um, that's what this whole program is designed to ferret out those kinda issues, so. Uh, we're still learning about it and we'll continue to learn and hopefully have results uh, by, to use for this coming budget cycle is what I'm hoping.
How does, how does our water table affect the results of this testing? Cause some years it can be high and ugh, you got bad, you know, water's seeping out, other years dry out and.
Yeah, we want it to be, the so, we don't want the soil to be at the saturated uh, time of year, so in other words, we wouldn't even attempt that right now because of the frost, it's kinda um, sporadic throughout our street system yet. We're probably looking at the first part of June or something, depending on spring moisture for this type of work.
And Shane, you, you are putting in drain tile on streets, new streets that are, are in kinda those areas that are susceptible to wet?
We have one project that's gonna have tile this summer and that's fifteenth uh, street up by the New Rec Center. And we'll kind of um, wait and see what this system does, but where we do have water table issues, that will always be a consideration for our street system. So, does anybody want me to?
That's a cheap fix. I think we're gonna, we're gonna call and if there'll be more questions, they might think about that this evening and, and when you bring it on the council agenda, they will uh, they'll probably offer them for you. Okay, folks, well, thank you very much, uh, again Julie and Craig, thank you, I know Todd left. But um, at this time I will adjourn the meeting, we'll be back at seven o'clock. Well, good evening ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Monday, March twenty-first, two thousand sixteen city council meeting. At this time, I will call the meeting to order and we will do the pledge of allegiance. Okay, Shelley, if you can take that blanket off, you can probably do a roll call over there.
No wonder I'm sick. Albertson? 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 Bueller? Bueller? Danforth?
Here.
Manti? Reeve from Berger is absent, Roby?
Here.
Solom? Thorson?
Here.
Tupper?
Here.
Vilhauer?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, and I would like to add to the consent agenda, the authorization to advertise for bids for the foundation field baseball lighting project. And with that, uh, that would go on uh, number, letter E. At this time, I'll look for a motion and a second for uh, motion by John, second by Randy, any questions?
That was to solicit bids?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yep, I, I will look for council action, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Uh, number two, approval of the agenda, I do want to add to uh, two point five, I'm gonna put a uh, Craig Atkins on there and Craig will actually be talking about an offer of purchase of some land from Watertown and we'll, we'll look at that. So, at this time, I'll look for a, a motion and a second. Motion by Beth. Second by Bruce. Any questions, concerns, hearing none, I'll look for council action, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carried. Okay, Craig, if you want, you can certainly come up, he just got this in his hands uh, seconds ago. This is an offer to purchase some land from the city of Watertown that was brought to me uh, earlier, earlier, I think it was Friday afternoon late that came in. So, if you want to just give us a little heads up on it, Craig.
All right, Craig Atkins with Watertown Development Company. Uh, we have a lot, um, I don't know that we still have it up here, um, is that on here still? I don't know where I'm looking at. We have a lot in the Endries Industrial Park that uh, it's the last lot, that's, there's, there's two lots left and there's one lot that's remaining and it's right next to um, ABS, Auto Body Solutions, or just to the west of Integrity Tool and Dye. It's a three point five acre lot. Um, so with any of these industrial, Endries Industrial Park properties or any other properties that the city sells uh, for an industrial or, or commercial purpose, um, we typically get involved because they run that offer through our office and we bring it to you. Um, in this particular case, we received, the mayor's office received this offer on Friday. Um, and, and so as the mayor said, I'm just looking at it, but it's that area outlined in blue that we're talking about, three and a half acres. Um, the offer came in for a hundred thousand dollars um, all in. Um, the uh, person offering the property had indicated that uh, that the lot was a little bigger than what he proposed and they're proposing contractor shops. Um, so it'd be similar to many of those buildings we see now where there's multiple tenants in one building. Um, we have been selling those lands in that, in that park for seventeen thousand five hundred an acre, plus a fifty cent per square foot assessment. Uh, and so the purchase price based off of that math would be a hundred and thirty-seven thousand uh, six thirty-three approximately. Um, and that's rough because I, you know, we, we'd have to get the exact square footage and whatever, but it's, it's approximately a three and a half acre lot. And so we uh, told the buyer, uh, both the mayor and I, our conversations with him at different times, that we would bring that forward, present it, um, get your feeling as it relates to that. Um, but at this point, I guess if you asked me what my recommendation would be is, because we sold those other lots for a similar amount, just because it doesn't work for him, doesn't mean it might not work for somebody else in terms of the lot dimensions. Um, and that we would either allow them to counter at a price closer to what we want, or we could talk about maybe another lot either in that park. We do have another lot in that park, it's lot thirty-four, uh, and it's north of the detention pond that's out there. The problem with that lot is there's no road, water, or sewer. And so, from a cost standpoint, I don't, you know, I don't know if we're really splitting hairs here or not, but we did suggest that as maybe a more appropriate place for what he's proposing. But again, without a road there, um, somebody's gonna have to take care of that cost.
Craig, you said one thirty-seven, six thirty-three and passed sale or sales, is that just the last sale or, or that's what most of them bet?
So, the seventeen, five thousand an acre has been past sales, not all of them, uh, but within the last four years, um, that's the, the number we've used.
We've been very consistent with that, haven't we?
Yep, and incrementally, just so you know, historically here, incrementally, those lot prices have gone up. They started at about ten thousand an acre, but that was before there was any infrastructure. And then we ramped that up to the current number and that was based off of the lot's value increasing because of the improvements that we made. So, and, and the other thing is, don't think about this as your traditional infrastructure improvement that you might have on private property because there were some other funds involved in this, the city's actual cost for this infrastructure was much higher than fifty cents a square foot, but that was the number we agreed to several years ago because we felt it was fair and we also felt that it wouldn't create undue competition with private developers. In other words, we wouldn't be undercutting the cost of the lots.
Well Craig, one question or thought, I should say, as I look at this, you know, in our work session, we talked about the need for the city buying additional land for this type of development and additional and, and when we are so short on that, I am not sure why we would cut the s- the sale price of this, tacking that idea of that notion onto the fact that we've been consistent with the other price.
Right, I agree.
My opinion is we should hang in there with that.
And, and you know, the, the, the man made a, a offer to the city of Watertown and we had to bring it forward to uh, to see if you were, would entertain that. And uh, that's why Craig stuck, stuck around for us.
So Craig, we haven't been actively trying to sell that, that just somebody came up with, knowing it was the city's and he wanted to?
Um, no, we actively have been trying to sell it, we have it listed on our website. Um, um, we don't, we don't, you know, we're not running it through a realtor for instance, or we don't have it listed, the city or the development company. We don't list very often, we'd, some of our properties, but not very often. Um, so, um, and when we get inquiries about available properties, um, you know, one of the first things we wanna understand is what type of business and how much land do you need? And then once we know that, we kinda direct them towards options. And we always encourage them to look at private development first, um, cause we're not trying to compete with the private developer. That's why when we did this park, there was really a need for it, we didn't have those less than five acre lots for these types of operations to locate in. Um, and I think it's turned out very well. Um, and as we expand this concept, I don't know that we'd want to um, deviate from that, you know, concept. Whereas, I mean, the reality is on our larger projects, um, subsidized is not the right word, but we do offer incentives as it relates to land value to help us secure financing. Doesn't mean we don't recoup that, it's just a lot longer out than what a private developer would be willing to do.
So, the last three that probably were out there, if, just correct me if I'm wrong, is probably ABS, McKeever's and Performance?
Yeah, yep.
And they all paid seven, they all paid that.
Yep, all three of those paid the seventeen five.
So, it'd be kinda tough for me to go back and look at those guys and say, well, you guys paid this and now we're giving it to somebody else cheaper, so.
How long ago were those sales, Craig?
Well, um, so, let's see, probably twenty-four, twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen? Yeah, yeah, I don't think there was anything out there last year, last summer.
Okay, so would we, would we need a motion and a second to uh, either accept or decline this?
I make a motion that we decline the offer?
Second.
Do you need it, am I correct? One of you?
If you formally want it in, in the minutes as some official action taken, you can do that.
I think we do, okay, so then I have a motion by Beth and a second by Mike to decline the offer. Uh, any, any other discussion on that? Hearing none, I'll look for council action, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Craig, while you're still here and, and can Shane, before you dump that off, could you take that down to that other little piece of properties? So, you guys are aware of it on Fourteenth Street and Twelfth Avenue Southeast. This is another location that he was looking at, this is going right next by our Ball Diamonds. And um, I just, just to, to, to kinda head this off, are you interested at all in selling any of this property or not? Can you show them where that's at? Right on the corner. It's down, right to your left, we own that corner also, the city does. And I don't know if you're at all interested in selling that, I, because the guy, I know that, I know the gentleman wants to take a look at that and make an offer on that. If we don't, if we're not interested at all, I mean, we should just say it upfront.
He has another building in that general area, I can't tell you exactly where it is.
That's, that's by all those other contractor shops, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
Uh, Mayor, do we own the land, you said on that corner, but is it all the way over to that?
That's correct.
To that, right there?
Yep.
Okay, so we own that whole frontage?
Well, I don't, show that up there, will you Shane?
Oh, to, I can see the line now that I can.
Yeah, we're right there, that's the city of Watertown, that's a great lot and I think we'd be remiss to sell that.
We own these two.
Okay, so then she, uh, Craig, you got an idea if he comes back to you and, and talks to you, can say that, you know, that, we really don't want to. Thanks man, I appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
All right. Number three, application for a transfer of ownership of a retail on-off sale malt beverage license from Freedom Value Centers Incorporated doing business as Goldmine at two twenty-five West Kemp to J and B dash five LLC doing business as Freedom Value Centers at the same location. At this time, I will open the public hearing if there's anyone who wants to speak in favor of or against this. Hearing none, I'll close the, the public hearing, I'm gonna look for a motion and a second for discussion. Motion by Mike, second by Don, any questions on this, this is a name, name change.
I'm looking at the address of the applicant, I don't understand, where are they, where are they from? Does eighteen forty-three Atwood Avenue RJ? Not a name of a town or?
Ri, Rhode Island.
Atwood, do they have a, just an Atwood Avenue in Rhode Island or?
Rhode Island.
Yeah.
Zero zip code, so I would assume that's in the northeast.
This is where the corporation of J and B dash five LLC is located, uh, for their address. It's owned by the officer that signs K and Patel. This is a, a, a change of ownership of the, of the liquor license. I believe they've sold their, if I'm not mistaken, the casino side of it and they're selling their license for the casino.
Do, where is it though, it's not even?
I believe it's in, it must be, if you're somebody from India.
Any other questions, cause this, this is, uh, like I said, they sold their, they sold their license for the casino. You guys wanna share what you're talking about so we, so we all hear this, so that we know. I'm just saying, any questions for, for finance or legal or myself? Hearing none, I'll look for council action, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Mayor, I just, I just, I struggle every time we get one of these things in front of us to know what the purpose of the, it is.
We had that discussion this morning during our meeting that we will uh, in your packets from now on, it'll have an explanation of what's going on.
As to what is being requested and why, okay.
And, and when, when you see it, I mean, they're, they're asking for a transfer of ownership, so basically, the owner- So basically, the owners of the license are changing. So that's what this license is, is, is somebody else is purchasing the right to, to have that license. And then we go through the whole background check, and, and then the new owners of that license would be listed on the back, and everybody we did a background check on would be on the back of that license application.
Right, and, and from now on, there will be an explanation of what's going on within the packet.
Just, uh, one line sentence saying what we, what is the purpose of this? It's a change of ownership, staying in the same location, is what this one is, correct?
That's correct.
Right, but for me to go through this whole form and try to figure that out, a lot of times, and this is a, may or may not be a good example, but a lot of times, I can't tell why they're doing what they're doing. So it, that would help immensely, for me, anyway.
Right. Okay, we'll move on to number four, kind of the same thing. Application for a transfer ownership of a retail on-off sale malt beverage license from Freedom Value Centers Incorporated, an inactive license at six fifteen Ninth Avenue Southeast to J M B dash six LLC, which will remain inactive at the same location. At this time, I will open the public hearing if there's anyone who wants to speak in favor of or against this. Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing, I'll look for a motion in a second for discussion. Motion by Randy, second by Beth, any questions on this one?
Explain to me again about inactive licenses, how long do they have and all this kinds, like, can this, these new people who purchase this, how long can they leave it inactive, or forever, or?
No.
No?
No, it's a, it's a two-year license, it's, it's, uh, inactive within that area. If they do not use it within two years, it reverts back to the city.
Okay, okay.
Does that reset?
I noticed it was both, both owners.
It will reset it this time with the new ownership.
Right, 'cause I noticed both the old owner and the new owner both had it as inactive, okay.
Or, or at that time they can, which I've seen happen over the years, have, somebody has an inactive license, they can transfer it to another location inactive. It's up to us to allow that to happen, so.
Yes, exactly. Any other questions on it? Hearing none, I'll look for couns, oh, sorry, what?
When it's inactive, they still pay their yearly fees, yep, that's what I thought, so, yep.
Yep. Okay. At this time, I'll look for council action, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Number five, proposed lease agreement with Nick and Matt Krantz Incorporated for city-owned land located at the wastewater facility. Mike, if you want to come up here, in the meantime, uh, this is a public hearing, I will open that at this time if there's anyone who wants to speak in favor of or against this. Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. I'm gonna look for, um, I'll look for a motion in a second for discussion on this. Motion by Dan, second by Glenn, and then, uh, you go ahead, Mike, and explain a little bit about it.
Um, the agreement leases four small sites at the wastewater facility to the Nick and Matt Krantz farm. The term is three years, the lease has the option to be renewed for three additional terms if we choose to do so. The rent was increased to fifty-five dollars an acre in two thousand and fifteen, and the rent is for the three small tillable sites, Site Two, Three, and Four, that they're in a range from about fifteen to twenty-five acres each, and the total rent due is three thousand thirty-eight dollars, twenty cents. Under this agreement, the leasing must, is responsible for weed abatement, and they cannot apply fertilizer to any of the sites without prior written authorization, 'cause that inhibits our ability to put our sludge on that land. Also, under the agreement, the leasing acknowledges that the city retains the right to convey any or all of the sites to other purposes, such as the shooting range that we're looking at right now. And, uh, in the event that some of the properties conveyed to another purpose, then we would do a rent adjustment, so.
Mike, you may have answered my questions already, the, is this a renewal of a, of a existing lease?
It kind is, we, uh, this same individual used to farm the ground where the softball and the ice are going, and so there's several sites, so it is partially renewal, yes.
And also, wh- why is there no rent on the, on the first part, on the first site?
Because, uh, that is the big one, number one there. It's actually, a lot of it, there's a, it's hard compacted berms, it, our cells that hold wastewater, it's a gravel road on top, and then there are windrows of compacted soil with rock riprap and pipe to distribute the water out in those ponds. So, there's that, uh, and, uh, also, we may have to, as we have recently for our ultraviolet system upgrade, we have to fill those at times, if they got cut hay down there, and I gotta use it for the wastewater plant to fill it with water, then, uh, that's what we would do. In the past, we used to just, uh, spray the weeds ourself and then mow it. This way, we don't have to go to the cost of mowing and handling the weeds, and, and it works out good for us.
Mike, in the, in the lease agreement, it says that there, that the agreement is extendable for three-year periods for three times?
Yes.
Is the, for each three-year period, is the price renegotiated, or is?
We could, um, we, we just increased it last year, these, these pri, pieces are so small, for example, like two is fifteen and a half acres, three is eleven point four acres. They're not real desirable, so we're just kind of keeping a crop on those, they're right out our back gate, so we can put sludge on it, you have to have a sludge on there to uptake the nutrients, to take our sludge, so. The rent, the little bit of rent we get is, is kind of nice, but the main idea is to have that property available for sludge, and, and, and also with all the stuff going on out there, we're talking about that shooting range that we might convey to someone else, it's, it's kind of up in the air what's going on out there.
Is the land to the west, which would be the left of Site Four, is that ours also?
No, that real, uh, that's the brown lease property, to the west.
To the west of Site Four.
Right there.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I almost looked at the west of Site One. Yes, that's one of the prime sites we're looking at now for that shooting range, it might go there, might go in Site Four, but we're hoping it'll fit in, uh, depending on how we have to orient it, uh, west of Site Four, yes.
Any other questions for Mike? Hearing none, I'll look for council action, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, thank you, Mike. Number six, ordinance number sixteen oh three, amending section two point zero one zero three and two point zero one zero three A, regulating the permitted times for sale and consumption of alcohol within and for the city of Watertown. This is a second reading, uh, and I will look for, uh, a motion in a second for discussion. Motion by Randy, second by Beth, as you all remember, we, uh, we, we had changed the time of the, uh, of selling in the liquor stores. This just brought everything back to normal, so that we can have this, the, uh, restaurants and the liquor stores and everybody open up at the same time, I believe it's eleven AM.
This basically takes the, the, uh, bars that don't, that aren't on the Sunday liquor license, that we're only allowed to open until one, it just kind of puts them all on an even playing field, a little easier to regulate everybody that way, and, so now they'll all be able to open at eleven o'clock.
It was too hard that we had some that couldn't be open until one, and some could be at eleven, and it just didn't work out.
Just cleans up everything for everybody, and, and, uh.
Any other questions on that? I believe I have a motion in a second. This time, I'll look for council action, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Number seven, ordinance number sixteen oh four, amending the zoning district boundaries by rezoning Little's First Edition from I-one Light Industrial District to C-three Highway Commercial District. Uh, at this time, I'll open the public hearing if there's anyone who wants to speak in favor of or against this. Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing, I will look for a motion in a second for discussion purposes on this. Motion by John Bruce, second by Glenn. This one here, folks, this just went through the planning commission today. Uh, it was approved unanimously through the planning commission that took it, all the Little's, Little Edition there, which went up to the purple, not the one on the east though, just so you know, across Thirty-first Street. That is not included in this, but everything off to the west side will now be in C-three, and it just makes sense, yeah. The purple will be, I don't know, blue, or brown, or red, whatever color that is, I don't know.
The I-one up here will be the same color and conditions as C-three down on the lower porch.
What color is that?
I call it purple and red.
Okay. All right, any questions on that for Shane, you guys? This was a good move by the landowners to change it all at, at this particular time. So at this time, I'll look for council action, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, thanks Shane. Number eight, authorization for the police department to accept a reimbursement of grant funds from the Department of Public Safety to hold two training events in two thousand and sixteen. Are you gonna need a motion in a second on this, do you, you're gonna need a motion by the council?
I'd like to get approval to.
Okay, so what I'll do, guys, I'll look for a motion in a second for discussion. Motion by Don, second by Dan, okay, if you.
I'll be as, as brief as I need here, I guess, uh, we're looking at, trying to host two classes this, uh, this summer. The State Department of, our Office of Highway Safety gets federal money that they receive and then pass through to local jurisdictions that are willing to host training classes. Um, these are in the line of Homeland Security preparedness. So there's two, like, what we call SWAT-type classes that, uh, we were selected to host. Each of the classes cost thirteen thousand seventy-eight dollars to host, they bring instructors in from, from all over the, the country, and then our police officers from throughout the state would come here for the week and train. Um, the, the money, the thirteen thousand seventy-eight dollars is all completely reimbursed by the Office of Highway, or the Office of Homeland Security, but it does require us to pay for the class upfront to the vendor that's providing the training. Um, so it'll show us in the red temporarily until we get reimbursed by the state. Uh, they provided us a letter that shows that they will reimburse us in the end, so. We're just looking for approval to move forward with that, and to kind of go into the red and then be reimbursed later.
I think it's important that you do this, I know that you got, you had the SWAT team out just a couple of weeks ago, and, and they did an incredible job, and I, I think it's, I think that training is important for you guys, so. I would recommend that you, uh, approve this, so.
Just one more thing, having a training locally in Watertown is advantageous to us, because we don't have to pay for hotel room and fuel and, and food when we send, uh, five or six of the officers to somewhere else to do that, so it, it's, it's kind of a hassle to have to pay for it upfront, but it saves us a ton in the long run, because they can sleep in their own beds and we don't have to pay for their, their meals.
How many, how many people from outlying area are coming in for this training, or approximately?
There'll be twenty officers total, we're hoping to have about six or seven of those will be, uh, Watertown Police Department officers.
So there's gonna be?
Coming from around the state.
Dozen or so come from other places that are gonna have to spend money on a motel room and, and all that, so.
Any other questions for Ryan? Hearing none, I'll look for council action, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Ryan, you know, when I heard the, uh, come across on the SWAT team going up there, I thought it was going to John's house.
I gotta say, I watched the whole thing for about four hours, uh, they're pretty impressive. Your, your group did an excellent job, uh, they were about a hundred feet from my porch over there working, and, uh, I kind of had an eyeball poking over the windowsill watching, so, but, uh.
They do a lot of training.
Your team did an excellent job.
Thank you.
Do you guys remember that, that, uh, that thing where, where the guy kind of hung out and his eyes were over the? Kilroy, yeah, I could see John. Kilroy was here, okay. Okay, moving on, thanks Ryan. Number nine, consideration amendment to the agreement with I M S Inc. for the pavement management study. This is what we all just kind of looked at earlier in the work session. Uh, what I'll do is I'll look for a motion in a second for discussion, and we'll have Shane take it over. Motion by Beth, second by Brad. Uh, Shane, is there, is there any question that you guys want to ask Shane, or, or if you want to tell the folks in the public that this did all go through the work session to, to take a look at that? But you're welcome to, um, touch base on it again.
Okay, well, I, I'll just focus on the table that we put together, um, kind of stating where, where things were at. So the, the project, um, originally, you know, the, the state share was sixty-two thousand eight eighty, city's portion was fifteen thousand seven twenty. When we went into that scenario, we were thinking that we would need to purchase our own coring machine and hire somebody to take cores, and just a rough guess, low estimate probably, is that that would have cost us thirty thousand dollars out of our own budget dollars, um, and would not be eligible for the grant, um, which we did. And the new money that we're proposing to add to the project is this twenty-nine thousand eight twenty-two. It would be grant-eligible up to the cap, and then, uh, the city's portion would be twenty percent of, of what, uh, up to the cap, and then, of course, anything that falls over the cap would be more. So just for comparisons, we were looking at about a forty-five to six thousand dollar city share with the approval of this, and if we can get it through the, more dollars to the grant, it's, we're looking at twenty-eight thousand four hundred, so. Simple math, I think it's a worthwhile thing, so.
Any questions, you guys? Okay, at this time, I'll look for council action, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, thanks Shane. Uh, also, number ten, consideration of bids received for the two thousand and sixteen street improvement project. This time, I will look for a motion in a second for discussion, we'll let Shane then explain what's going on. Motion by Glenn, second by Don, and then, uh, you go ahead, Shane.
Okay, we did get very good bids, uh, it is a new company, and we've done some homework on them. Um, I, I'm not sure if it's pronounced coal or keel, but excavating, they're a company out of Hancock, Minnesota. We did do some research, we did not find any negative, uh, feedback on that, so we're proposing to go ahead and award to that company. Um, they did have the low bid of three hundred and thirteen thousand one sixty-six, uh, which is eleven percent lower than our estimated engineer's cost of three hundred and fifty-one thousand six ninety-four. Um, we did have all, three other bids, uh, which ranged in the three hundred and forty-six thousand dollar range to just under, uh, three hundred and ninety. The good news that I, that you don't see on your, um, in your packet, is we did a comparison, and when we did our preliminary assessment, uh, hearing with the folks that own property along there, we were giving them, um, for instance, one segment had a estimated cost of ninety-one to ninety-six dollars per foot. With these new bids, that more realistic number is about seventy-one dollars a foot. On the other segment, we were talking about a hundred and ten to a hundred and fifteen dollars per linear foot. Those actuals are closer to ninety-four dollars a foot. So I think we did a good job putting our project together, we've gotten good bids. I, I would hope to think that everybody that owns property along there would see the value that we've included in this project and, and would willingly proceed with this project, uh, at this point. And that's what our recommendation is, is that we award to this contractor and, uh, proceed with the project.
Any questions for Shane on this?
I just have one, have we talked to anybody that has worked with these folks before?
Yes, we, we interviewed, um, three different communities.
And good response, I take it?
Yes, yep. It, it's a relatively new company, so their history isn't well-vetted, but the ones that we did have as references had no, uh, issues.
Who does the, uh, the testing of the, of the, the compaction, who does that?
We'll do that with our own staff.
Okay, any other questions for Shane? Hearing none, I'll look for council action, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Number eleven, consideration of bids received for the two thousand and sixteen sidewalk accessibility project. This time, I'll look for a motion in a second for discussion. Motion by Dan, second by Beth. All right, Shane, if you want to take on that.
Okay, again, uh, we took bids, um, this year's project was a little bit scaled back from last year. Uh, if you recall, last year's project, we did a very substantially sized project, and our bids came in extremely high, so no award was made, and so no construction happened on our sidewalk program last year. This year, we decided that we would take a little bit more conservative approach and, um, dissect that project into, where we'll have two or three projects over the course of the next couple of years to complete. Uh, we did get a good bid from Tyzak Concrete out of La Center, Minnesota. They have done work for us in the past, they are actually one of the premier sidewalk companies in the state of Minnesota, they go all over, they bang out their work really fast. I mean, they're fast, efficient, and, and really, uh, good to work with. So we have no bones with awarding this contract to Tyzak, and in fact, their bids, um, came in substantially lower than our engineer's estimate. We had a, um, engineer's estimate of two hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars, uh, we're roughly eighty thousand dollars below that. So what we may actually do is look at some of the fringe areas in, in our program and add those, but I wouldn't do that without seeking permission from you folks to do so. But, I mean, we do have budget, we could, could potentially add a few, uh, sidewalk segments in if, if desired, and we'll, we'll bring that forward to you if we see something that we really want to, to accomplish this summer. Uh, we are incorporating work for the park, uh, system in this. We have actually four different, um, segments of sidewalk improvements in this park system that we're gonna take care of through this project for Jay, and I think those are much-needed improvements to those park segments, and they're, again, well within his budget to complete, so. We have no, um, questions about making a recommendation to award this contract at this time.
Good, any questions for Shane?
Uh, Shane, I guess you've probably already answered the question, but just the fact that it's so much less than the engineer's estimate, and so much less than the other bid that we got.
and so much less than the other bid that we got, no concerns?
Again, this company is based on efficiency. They'll come in with twenty to thirty people, and they'll start working on multiple, uh, locations all at one time. And they'll, they're just so efficient, it's, it's amazing to watch.
Good deal.
I might just have a question, Shane. Why would we not want to tell you to go ahead and spend your budget when we have all these areas?
We'll, we'll kind of hold that budget back a little bit, yeah. We're gonna wait, we're gonna wait just a little bit on that, yeah. Good idea.
Mother said no.
Yeah, we're not going there. Alright. We're gonna hold off just, just a little bit. There might be some other projects that Shane wants to do. Okay. So anyhow, uh, any other question, any other questions on that? Hearing none, I'll look for council action. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Shane, I do have a quick question on that, that I, I just kind of thought of. We had a company a couple of years ago that took forever, and it, it lasted and lasted and lasted, never got done. Do you have a, uh, an end date on that, and if you do, is there any, any kind of a cost associated?
We do have an end date as, with all of our contracts, and I, for, I don't have that number right in my head, but usually what we try to do is wrap those up before school starts, if possible, and this company will, because they're from out of town, they'll come in, they'll get it all done and lined up and get done, and we won't know what their proposed start time is until, you know, now that we've made an award, we'll, we'll have a pre-construction conference, and we'll define all those particular, um, schedules at that time.
Perfect. And then I just wanted to mention two, uh, under old business here, I'm gonna slide over to the next one. I'm going to the county meeting tomorrow morning, and we'll be discussing the Cook complex. You know, they, they agreed to a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to put on the, uh, on the north side of the complex. I think our estimate is up nine thousand dollars from that. We'll ask them if they're, if they're okay with, uh, with doing that. I still expect it's gonna come in under that, but, um, we'll just make sure that they're, they're on board with that. Any other old business you guys need to talk about?
Well, I, go ahead.
Question, fifteen second update on drainage, north part of town, northeast part.
That, um, as I understand it, the consultant has, or has or is gonna give me, um, plans to review. Supposedly they're nearing completion, so I hope to see something in my office in the next week or two to review.
I just got, uh, a couple of comments. I have gotten some calls and, and almost got hit myself in the roundabout up by the, the schools. I'm confident that the reason being is we all educated to be yielding to the right when we should be yielding to the left up there. Is the signage up there adequate for that, or is there something else that we could do to maybe? I did get some, I got called today that, that a gentleman had, had, uh, had two incidents very recently at the roundabout in the same scenario, and I have myself, 'cause I travel that a lot. I've had others mention that to me. Is there, and I looked at the signage the other day, and it, you know, once you do it and get used to looking left, you're, you're fine, but is there something that we could do up in that area to maybe bring more attention to that yield left?
I will say that the signage that's there is, um, pretty much a national standard. I mean, it, it doesn't change a lot if you go from state to state and, and community to community. I think what, I actually observe more of the opposite. It's those people that hesitate and don't continue into the roundabout that can create more, um, potential conflicts than those that, um, rush in. I mean, obviously, if you see something that's very closely coming around, in other words, you can't wait till that car gets too close to you and then try to pull out in front of you. You, you roll into that thing, and the car that's coming around does have to yield to that other car as well. I mean, it's a merging event. It, it, one has to give to the other, depending on where you're located within this circle. So it is an education piece. Each person has to educate themselves on how to safely operate it, but it's not an, a unique.
Well, and that's it, I suggested today that, you know, that it is a tough thing, and there's only so much we can do education-wise. But I said I would bring it up.
Yep.
And then the second item on there is, and this is probably for the mayor and, and the police department, but the, I did get a call and a complaint about speeds on Nineteenth Street and on Grandview. Yes, not a you issue, this is the mayor issue. I live on Nineteenth, and I will tell you that since the snow's kind of went away, it's been bad. And I don't know if we need to have, and there really are some times of day that are very prevalent, that seven, seven-thirty to eight, eight-thirty in the morning, and then that awful work, and, you know, four, four-thirty, five o'clock timeframe, the end of the day. But it, it really has, that's a little speedway up there, um, at certain times.
Ryan, maybe you want to pass it along to the chief for me. We'll just put up one of those speed signs for a while and, and see if it can slow people down. I, I feel bad, 'cause I was gonna tell you, you were having issues on the roundabout, I was gonna say step on a little bit.
Can I make a suggestion? This is what I tell people that call me about the roundabout and using it, is I suggest to them that they take hours of the day that are less traveled, whether that's in the evening or middle of afternoon, depending on their schedule, and come at it from every direction, and just get used to the idea of merging from this way and from this way and from that way, and you'll find that pretty soon it does become second nature. It goes along with education and practice, but if you can do it at a time when you're not stressed out by all these other cars coming, it helps a lot.
Well, the people that are, that have called or talked to me about it, they, they know how to use it. It's the people that are in it that, or, or that are coming into it while they're into it that don't know how to use it.
Well, tell them to practice too.
I did, I did have somebody mention to me that after the snow the other day, it was extremely slippery going around that. Yeah, but that's, that's what I explained to them too, but they said that was worse than they've ever seen, but.
It was, it was pretty bad. Uh, another thing I just wanted to mention, that I was up at the community center today and went through, and it is moving extremely fast. Mike, I know you, uh, were up on a tour. If you want to give a little, little heads up, it was, um, it was exciting to see what they're doing. There were, there's, I think, uh, a lot of concrete being poured every day. They've got, gosh, I seen, uh, the, one of the, the rec centers', uh, basketball court was poured and.
Yeah, you know, when we first started this thing, there was a lot of infrastructure underground, and people got nervous 'cause nothing was going up. And, uh, and it takes that time. Well, now that the primary building is up, you really don't see anything going on. It's all interior for the most part, and so we did take a tour last week, took the rec center, uh, board up there last week, went through it. Um, like the mayor suggested, most of the floors are poured. The primary areas that weren't poured last week were the gyms, and, uh, there is actually a storage room or two that, and hallway that weren't done. So those will get worked on, uh, really probably by sometime next week. I'm guessing that, that probably all the concrete interior will be poured. They're starting a lot of the interior, uh, stubbing out of the walls that are going on in there, and, uh, so you kind of get lost in, in steel beams. So it's coming along really well. Uh, they, they look to start the, digging the pool sometime, uh, in April. So probably by mid-April is kind of the target that they're looking.
They're actually going in tomorrow to see if the frost is gone. They don't think it is inside there, but they're, I'm gonna check it out.
It's exciting. It's, uh, it's really coming.
They're, uh, they're actually gonna start hanging sheet rock, uh, probably, probably in the next couple of days up in there, so it, it is fun. So if you guys get a chance to go up and go through there, I would welcome that, I think.
Yeah, if you guys want, I can coordinate a meeting or, or a tour for you guys, like we did the rec center, that'd be a good thing.
John Small and I went through it too the other day. John does a good job. He knows what everything, you know, 'cause it's hard to remember what each one of those rooms is all about.
I think Mike's idea is a pretty good idea, though, instead of me going and this guy going and this guy going. It'd be nice to have a tour of the majority of the council that could do it all at one time, so.
In the big gymnasiums, just to kind of give you an idea, you know, you know it's big, but when they have a, uh, it's a smaller size, but there's a road grader in there working, and there's two or three bobcats working, and then they're pouring concrete over here. Those, those folks are moving, and that's all by great construction is doing that concrete work in there. So it, it's, it's fun to see them move. Yeah, it's crazy. Any other questions? You guys have any old business or new business?
I do have one question. I, uh, I went for a little ride yesterday and went around the lake. It was very disturbing. I know of at least six places on the bike trail where people had to walk out in the street to walk around trailers that are sitting across the bike, bike trail. You know, we haven't, when, when we addressed the parking issue in town, we also said that we would address the lake, because it had to be addressed differently, which we, I don't think we've even looked at yet, so.
No, we haven't, and I think that's on the radar, that we're gonna be looking at the lake, and, uh, they shouldn't be over the bike trail. You know, that's, that's important, and, uh, Shane, can you pass that to, to Jim tomorrow? Were, anywhere in particular, just?
Uh, the worst ones I've seen are right over by the, uh, there was two or three different ones that were right over by the, uh, Country Club.
Country Club.
Yep.
Okay.
And, and the other ones were, you know, around the lake someplace. I can't remember, but I know there was like three of them just in a short period there.
Mayor, can I ask you a favor? Can you give a, a very, you know, a short update on the gun range rifle? There are all kinds of rumors going around. Uh, I get stopped and asked about that. It's good because they're, they're excited about it, but there, there's a lot of feeling that decisions have been made in regards to what we have, and, and a lot of them haven't been discussed or, or, but we have not made decisions. If you would just give something so that we can maybe get people informed as to what the current status is.
Right, yeah, and Shane just put it up there, where, where we're actually proposing the gun range to go. Uh, we're, we're looking at more like, uh, two projects is, is how I would consider it. The first project will be really closely tied in with the game fishing parks, and that'll be your outdoor range. That, we're, we're looking at the outdoor range probably more on the south side of that lot. And, and because we can use some fill work with inside the floodwa, or floodplain, I'm sorry. We can move dirt around there as long as we aren't messing in the floodway. That should, I'm, I'm really hoping there's a good chance that with the game fishing parks, how they're looking at it, how the city is looking at it, that that first project could get started yet this fall and, and have that outdoor range working. That's gonna be a hundred, two hundred yard and three hundred yard plus pistol ranges. I think they go twenty-five and fifty yards for the outdoor pistol. The second part of it is an indoor range. Uh, we, we have not come to any conclusion yet of what's, what's happening on there. I was at a, um, a conference in Alabama here this last week, and it's very interesting to follow that because there's, there's so many things that, that have to take place. There's ventilation problems, there's how do you get rid of the lead problems? There's just many, many things. Do we have retail inside of it? Do we have just pistol range? Do we have a short-range rifle in there? Do we, do we have, uh, bow and arrow in there? There's so many unanswered questions, and that's what this group of about twenty people are doing right now. We're, we're looking at that. Uh, we are going to take a ride down to Brookings and Garrison, Garrison is it? Garrett, Garretson, and take a look at their ranges. They actually, uh, did it within themselves. They had their own engineering that did it. We need to talk to them and see how it worked out, what their cost is per square foot to get it done. But this is a project that is gonna take a little bit of time, especially with the indoor gun range. We want to do it right. If we're gonna do it, let's, let's do it right. So there, there's a huge safety factor that goes into play here. Can they, can they watch somebody shoot? Can they not? But you're looking more in the year two thousand seventeen in order to get that, uh, that project done in there.
Well, Mayor, and that, and to remind, you know, the public that that, the real, one of the real needs for that indoor range is so that the current indoor range that's at the Boys and Girls Club can be vacated. It, it was a probably good decision way back when, but it's just not an appropriate place for that anymore. And, and as they look to have their plans for that facility, we will need them to have, uh, a new location for a range. And that's what's really what impetus behind driving that.
So it's actually going very, very well, and, and we just got to make sure that we got all our, uh, ducks in a row on that thing. And, uh, Mike and I, Mike Berger and I have had conversations with the landowners to the east. Matt Krantz and Steve West, I believe are their names. Uh, they're all on board with this thing. They're, they're extremely happy to see the property used in, in the right way, and, uh, we were worried that, you know, they all run some cattle out there, and, uh, they said, you know, those cows are okay. They're, they can take it. Not the shots, but they can take the noise, so we're good with that. So everything's going smooth. Dan, you've been in on those meetings, and although you were out for the last one, I think, and, uh, it, it's going good. And it's a great group of people, you know, just so you know, the, the, uh, Game Fish and Parks is on board, the police station's on board. We have, uh, uh, L E T I who is working very closely with us, and just many, many, many groups are involved in this, in this process. Does that help you, Mike?
I looked at the one out in Scottsdale, which is, uh, totally different. I mean, it's just huge, but it, it's interesting. You can kind of see what it's gonna look like, and so it's pretty exciting.
The Game Fish does have a, a, a video on YouTube. If you go to, uh, go to that and look at the, uh, the building of the outdoor range in Fort Pier. And it's just, it's fascinating to watch that thing go up. It's, it's a, it's a good show. Any liaison member reports? Any need to go into executive session? Otherwise, I'll look for a motion as second to adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. I think that was Mike and.